I'll call the order of the December fourteenth regular meeting, the Wellington Town Board of Trustees. Rice for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Are there any amendments to the agenda for tonight? No. Any conflicts of interest?
Sure.
All right. Community participation. Individuals who wish to speak on non-agenda items are asked to step or sign up. Fill out the signup sheet at the podium. Once called upon, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll be limited to three minutes during the public comment.
Try to come up early so I can write all this down. Christine Gator Downtown Core, I just, you guys have probably heard about Governor Polis and how he stated that the emergency is over. And I know you guys have stated that your state of a emergency is based on wanting to get funds, and I totally understand that. I just want you to consider that since the state is no longer in a state of emergency and the governor has says that the emergency is over, that they probably will give you the funds regardless of whether you're in a state of emergency or not. I don't think they'll be hypocritical and say that you can't have government funds when they themselves are not in a state of emergency. So I just wanted to let you guys know, you guys probably heard that in the news, but just the points to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? No. Presentations. First one is Strategic Plan 2021 Update. Ms. Sheldon.
Give me one second while I reload this. Alrighty. Good evening. This is the final strategic plan update for 2021. As a reminder for the public, the strategic plan was created by the Board of Trustees to align goals, visions, and values of the town. And town staff uses this as a roadmap when prioritizing projects. So this is our update for the final quarter of the year. So these are the four focus areas that we have in the strategic plan. And within those pillars, we have goals set within them. So first and foremost, we have the goal of balanced and resilient revenues. We have been talking on and on about the American Rescue Plan Act money, and so that first 1.3 million came in 2021, and the Board of Trustees voted to allocate that to the water fund. We have 1.3 million coming in 2022 as well. Town staff is currently reviewing the fee schedule, which includes all of the fees that the town uses to operate. And so that will be, that's currently in the works and will be presented to the board in January, most likely. And then tonight you'll be hearing from Cody and Kelly about the Safe Built Contract. And this is a great opportunity for the town, presents a lot of future revenue potential. The cost savings equal up to about the amount of two new positions which were approved in the 2022 budget. So I'll let them focus on that, but high level, that's just a great opportunity for the town. A second goal was to identify, attract, and retain commercial development and businesses. We just wanted to celebrate that we had 38 new businesses in town this year. This includes home businesses. It also includes like online shops as well as brick and mortar buildings that we've seen come online. And we also wanted to highlight the grants that the town received this year. We received up to $719,625, all of which support local businesses, which is really exciting. And then also we've had several different staff members reach out to different partners relating to cost-effective lending opportunities for our small businesses, especially to help out with some of these grants that include some matched monies from the businesses themselves. Another goal that we had was the comprehensive plan, and that was adopted in August of 2021. So now we are transitioning to the land use code update. And the final adoption will align both of those documents in 2022. This is a great opportunity for the town to have a vision of what the next 20 years is going to look like for the town. And I'm excited to see what comes from that. We also wanted to highlight our partnerships from 2021. We had a lot of regional partners in various forms. A lot related to water, a lot related to our conservation programming, grant funding. We had Laramie County help with our elections, which was fantastic, just lots of great opportunities, and these partnerships are so valuable. We wanted to highlight all that we could, and obviously there are so many more than are on this list, so definitely a priority for the town. Our second pillar is infrastructure. So first goal in that was to ensure adequate current and future water supplies. Town staff is often in conversations with regional organizations about potentials for partnerships, what it looks like to have redundant water supplies and to support multiple communities at once. We also have been really pushing our water conservation program this year. This was the first year that this program was online, and we had a lot of things go really well, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for growth there, too. We had some irrigation audits for residents and HOAs to participate in. This is an opportunity for professional staff to come, see your irrigation system and determine inefficiencies. We also had some youth programming, which taught our youth at the library about the treatment process. We had our water treatment plant superintendent demonstrate the filtration process and then had them build their own, which was fantastic. And we've been doing a lot more education classes just in general with the town, so we are doing that with our utility grant. We've had several participants come with that. We're continuing our advanced metering replacements. Town staff is constantly doing that, and those new meters are also going into our new built houses. And finally, we are currently running a shower head exchange program here at the library where residents can come in and they can either recycle their old unit or just pick up a new one and replace their shower heads with efficient ones free of cost from the town. And that came from the Northern Water Conservation District, who provided those, which was fantastic. Last thing on that slide is about water shares. So the town received 14.5 North Pooter irrigation shares this year, and that was through developments. The town did not buy those. The developers did provide those through that process. We also have the goal of planning and developing purposeful facilities. Staff completed a DOLA grant this year that created a matrix that we can use once the town is ready to look at site locations for a future town hall. It goes anywhere from determining costs of if there's a utility onsite versus if we would have to bring utilities to the site, what that cost would look like. It also includes some of the softer categories such as visibility, accessibility, things like that for residents. So that's an exciting tool that we will have to use to our disposal in the future. And then an exciting news, I'm sure as everyone has seen the construction happen on Third and Harrison, we have a new building coming onboard early in 2022. This will provide all of the public-facing services for residents in one building, which is fantastic, and it'll streamline a lot of processes for the town. Another goal in here is to create opportunities for transportation and stormwater management. We had two of those grants awarded this year for Main Street, and we are applying for additional ones as well, really focusing on improved infrastructure. And then with stormwater, we have that Stormwater Master Plan in progress. The town has hired that consultant and those conversations that are happening currently. And finally, we have that County Road Nine and Highway One intersection, and we have those funds available for the design process of that potential roundabout. So a lot more to come with that, but that's an exciting opportunity as well. In terms of community engagement, we have the goal of building awareness about town services and programs. One of the sub-goals in that was to increase social media presence, which has been fantastic. Currently, our Facebook is, has a reach of 16,833 people, which means that many accounts have interacted with some form of a post or an ad or a sponsored item like that on Facebook, which is really exciting. It means that the town is getting out into people's social media accounts. We also have an increase in our reach in Instagram, as you can see. And again, the town realizes not everyone has social media, so we have been trying to build awareness in terms of services and programs through print materials as well. We did an every-door mailer for the election to kind of warm up people to what was happening, what the questions were going to be on the ballot. We also have created a few banners, such as the one for the Budget Bonanza, which kind of outlined the document, so people could see it prior to that event. And we also are doing the coasters and table tents, which were really successful for the comprehensive plan, again, for the land use code update. So those are some great things we got going on. We also have the monthly newsletter, and we have had an average of a 60% open rate, which is astronomical in the government industry. Usually it's around 28%, so that's fantastic, and we've heard a lot of great feedback from that as well. Goals for the future, we want to optimize based on user analytics, so staff will be looking at how many people are opening on their mobile versus their desktop or what the average read time is, and then adjust content based on that. Our last pillar there is organizational strength. One of the goals within that was to update the personnel policy. That was a very old document, and staff was struggling to use that. So we have, staff has worked really hard on creating a new handbook that is currently in legal review, so hopefully that will be able to launch early in 2022, and it just outlines the practices and policies with the goal of keeping staff safe and also keeping accountability of staff. So that's a great opportunity we have ahead of us. And then employee compensation benefits was also a goal in that organizational strength pillar. So staff has been reviewing job descriptions as well as selecting a new medical insurance. This new medical insurance room takes the town away from being self-funded, which reduces the risk of high claims from participants. So this is a good opportunity that could benefit the town significantly. So that will start in January, and staff has been updated that we had a full meeting altogether to get signed up and everything like that. Final goal is the on and off boarding process. So currently, staff is conducting exit interviews if Steph is leaving to determine inefficiencies or where we can improve as an organization with the goal of always to be an employer of choice. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. It's kind of nice to go back through and kind of recap everything that's happened because you kind of forget through the year what happened and what didn't. It's nice to check some of those goals off and make sure we're still heading in the right direction on our strategic goals, so thanks for that presentation.
Absolutely.
Comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to consent agenda. Minutes for the November ninth, 2020, regular Board of Trustees meeting and the November sixteenth, special Board of Trustees meetings. If you have any questions on the consent agenda items.
So was it properly noted that the packet was changed? Because the minutes that I'm looking at from today are not the minutes that were available on Friday.
They were. What part of the minutes?
So on the vote for the, the one thing that I did notice that I was going to bring up is when we were doing the resolution establishing non-residential water charges. They had no nays were covered in that, but then the packet that's up today, those nays are properly recorded. So there was a change in the packet from Friday to today at some point, but that was never noticed via the website or email.
It was since that was updated prior to, the 25 hours prior to, that's why it wasn't sent out already.
Okay. I just requested, at least for the board, that we get notified when there have been changes to the packet, because I've been reviewing up until today the packet from Friday. So if there had been other things that were changed, I wouldn't have known about that.
Thank you for making those changes, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Can you get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes.
We'll move on to action items. Number one, ozone equipment purchase for the water treatment plant expansion and Hansel Phelps Hydro Construction Contract. Ms. Smith.
Thank you all. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm here tonight presenting kind of on behalf of Dave Meyer, who is taking a well, much deserved and earned vacation. I have a sneaky suspicion he could be watching remotely, which would make me sad. But we are here tonight trying to seek board authorization to execute a contract with Hansel Phelps Hydro for construction services for the water treatment plant expansion project. And then also to then further authorize Hansel Phelps to purchase the necessary ozone equipment in a pre-procurement situation from Pure Flow Primazone for that treatment plant expansion. I don't have a presentation tonight. PowerPoint as a contract on a PowerPoint is a little dry. So I'm hoping that all of your questions are mostly answered within the AIS, but I will highlight a few things. The main thing is that do, we're here because mainly due to vendor lead times, design needs, and the project schedule. We are looking at a pre-purchase need for this ozone equipment. And hence, the construction contract is necessary to have in place in order to facilitate that pre-purchase. This will likely, just as a heads up, not be the only pre-purchase we come back to you with, given the supply chain issues that we're facing globally at the moment. But just as kind of to run through the AIS a little bit and hit on some of the keynotes. That selection of this ozone manufacturer has a pretty significant impact on the size of the building that's required at the facility, which affects design details, so we're not able to complete full design until we have that selection secured and moving forward. This ozone procurement process was actually initiated in early September from Hansel Phelps through a bid process. We received four bids in total. The design team reviewed all of that big, big package, which I do believe the bid assessment was included in your packet. Based on the design team reviews and the completeness, qualifications, and completeness of their bid package, and actually the O N M and lowest capital cost, Pure Flow Primazone was the selected contractor or selected for the ozone. And pending board approval, the plan would be the HP Hydro would then issue an intent and contact, contract directly with Pure Flow Primazone for the purchase. And this would then commit Pure Flow Primazone to that price. And a summary of those ozone package costs and payment schedules attached. And again, just really to facilitate that pre-purchase, we have to go ahead and get that construction contract in place with HP Hydro. So that's why we're asking for those things at once tonight. So with that, I'd like to be able to answer any questions that you have. We do have some reps here, both from HP Hydro as well as with Jacobs. If there are design questions that you have that I am not able to answer. And DJ is also here for support. Guess he knows all of the things.
Okay, thank you. Anything on the board?
So I did have a couple of questions in the packet as a part of the pricing that was broken out for the different vendors. There was this cost of guaranteed energy and LOX cost. What are those costs? And how do we arrive at those? Because those significantly change the pricing based on the vendor.
So the LOX cost, that's the, and I might list, yeah, liquid oxygen, but I was going to see if Mr. Paquette wanted to come up. So that's a function of the type of ozone, the type of ozone manufacturer and the process that's designed. That actually went in quite a bit to determining our selection of Pure Flow Primazone, as you probably saw in that bid package or in that comparison. Their O and M costs were significantly lower, exactly, as well as one of their, another reason for that selection is their footprint is significantly smaller, too, for the, for the processes, which has a direct then impact to the size of the building that's needed. Yep.
And then the guaranteed energy, what was that specific?
I am, without having it in front of me, I'm guessing that it's related directly to the energy requirements.
I'll look at what Jacobs. It's related to the efficiency. It's, it's related to the efficiency of their units. Each unit has a different efficiency of how they generate the ozone from liquid oxygen, and that's representative of how much energy it takes to same produce the unit.
Then the other question that I had is that I see under the delivery, and so is this like one of the first things that gets put into plants? Is this one of the last things, or where does this fall? Because I'm seeing from the delivery that it says eight to 10 weeks from receipt of purchase order for engineering and equipment submittals, and then 18 to 22 weeks from approval to whatever, delivery. So even looking at maybe a year, right, roughly? So that would put us at December of 2023. The concern that I have is we have a warranty on that, that's a standard warranty that's for 18 months from shipment or 12 months from when we pay for that in full. The concern that I have is if our plant doesn't go live until midway through 2024, we haven't even used the system, and we're already halfway through the warranty.
I would actually let defer to Al if you want to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to check on that issue. I'll have to check on that issue with my design team. Typically, we have the warranties for that are post-startup upon substantial completion. That's when the contractor's warranty and the vendor's warranty would normally initiate, but I will clarify.
Okay, because that's kind of an important thing for me, because it says here in the packet, standard warranty from shipment or from buy-off. So I mean, if we're not giving the final payment till the plant's done, but then the question is if that's past that 18 months, because it's whichever comes sooner, so it's not whichever is later, if, if, if our plant doesn't start till 2025, we're already into that 18 months of shipment. And that's my concern, is that we could end up having a unit that we have no warranty on. And so that is, at least to me, that's a kind of a major concern.
And be able to get you that answer. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Good. Open up the public comment. No? Okay. I'll bring it back to board. Any further questions? Okay. Look for a motion to approve the ozone equipment purchase for the water treatment plant expansion and the Hansel Phelps Hydro Construction Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
No, because we don't know about guarantee.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes. Thank you.
I will get back to you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next item. Authorizes the execution of contracts for Laramie County Site Plan Review for the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant.
All right, Crystal, what do I do? I see it.
I'm sharing your screen. No pressure.
I know, right?
All right, good evening. Name's Nathan Ewart, civil engineer. Tonight, we are bringing four contracts for consideration by the board for the Laramie County Site Plan Review Process. As you know, both the treatment plants are located outside town limits within the county. Therefore, they fall under the county land use code requirements. Part of those required, those land use code requirements were updated March 31st, 2021. And in this case, the dates are important as we sign contracts with Jacobs Engineering on the water treatment plant side, September 11th, 2020, and on the wastewater treatment plant, December 16th, 2020. In the previous land use code, the expansion of municipal treatment plants was explicitly not part of the location and extent review process. However, with the March 31st land use code revision, they now do fall under the site plan review process from the county. I went ahead and staff contacted the county planning department, confirming that we do indeed fall under their site plan review or location and extent process, at which point they explained to me that because their expansions, their existing plants, they, they fall under the site plan review process. At that time, I was provided a fairly extensive checklist of about 26 documents, including reports and various submittals that are required for this site plan review process by the county. As you can see, just a screenshot, some of them aren't applicable to our sites. Some of them, such as a geotech report, have already been completed, and so then it's just a matter of forwarding that on to the county as part of that package. To get through the site plan review process, typically this, it's, it's interacting with the county planners, so typically you would see a planner or an architect leading this effort. So after much deliberation, we went ahead and decided to solicit bids from planning and architecture firms to help us get through this process in a timely manner. We received, we solicited from four companies and received three different bids. We reviewed the bids and made our selection based off of the experience of that firm with the Laramie County planning requirements as well as their proposed fee. The selected consultants, the planning and architecture consultant for this process was MTA Planning and Architects. In addition to that contract, there are additional scope items that weren't included with Jacobs' original contracts that we do need to have Jacobs support with. And so we are, we are, I've, I've included an amendment to their original scope of work to have them provide those documents for us for this process. We are planning on using the existing GL numbers for the construction and design of the plant to fund this effort on both the water side and the wastewater side. So tonight I've got two contracts with MTA Planning and Architecture for the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant, and then I also have two amendments to Jacobs Engineering's scope of work. Again, one for the wastewater treatment plant and one for the water treatment plant. With that, I will take questions.
Any questions from the board?
We just have one quick one. What is the current code cycle that the county is under? I know they're getting ready to adopt the next, next round. When are they still under the 2018? And do you know when they'll be adopting the next round?
So they're on, they're on their phase, what they're calling Phase One, and that was adopted March 31st of 2021. From what I can tell, they're working on Phase Two, which doesn't necessarily, from what I've seen, it's not impacting the location and extent and site review process. It has other requirements that I'm not super familiar with.
And that's the 2021 code package?
2021, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They, yeah, they, they call it Phase One, and there's presumably a Phase Two and maybe a Phase Three coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Got some questions. I'll let other people go first.
I just had a procedural question. Once we get to, are we looking, are we passing all four of these at once? Or these need individual motions that need to be passed individually?
I would probably recommend at least two motions, one for the MTA Planning and Architecture contracts as one package, and then as the Jacobs Engineering contracts as one package.
Okay, thank you very much.
So when you say these are funded from the existing GLs, does this mean that you're taking this out of funds that have already been budgeted away from something else? Or are these being added to the total cost of the existing plants that we are already looking at?
Our intent is we're going to use those existing GLs with the budget that they have. And our hope is that we can find the time and the money within there to allocate towards this and maybe some cost savings within, within the current Jacobs design effort is our intent. We're not adding money, I guess, to those GLs.
Okay, there's a big difference between a hope and we're not. Because base, so we're not, so this will not raise the cost of the existing plant at all. We're going to cut this from somewhere else.
That is our plan, yes.
Okay. And was this included in the original scope? Well, it sounds like this wasn't included. So why was the site plan process not included in the original scope of this project?
In the previous counting code, the specifically, it states that specifically, it states that municipal treatment plant, plant expansions are not required to be, go through the site plan review process.
Okay, and that changed in the new code cycle?
Yes.
And was this project started after that new code cycle? Or was this an existing project before the code cycle change?
No, the, the contract dates were the September and then the December.
So we were already in process. So I have a major issue with this is because we were already underway with this project and the county decided to change their code, which is all well and good for them. This is within our GMA. We were already under process with this, so I would say we need to push back on the county and say this is already ongoing under your old rules. We didn't have to do anything. I would say we need to push back on this. That's my thoughts on that.
If I could add, we've, we've had multiple conversations with the county and our intent is to get whatever waivers we can from the requirements that they will allow us to get that will not hold up the process. Some of the waivers have to go before the county commission and those obviously, you know, have to plan those out months and months in advance. So our intent right now is to get as many waivers as we can through this process. Because, I mean, yeah, we have the same kind of feeling.
So that fairly, working about basically adding $45,000 to each of those, whether it's trimmed from something else for something that the county changed things on that in the middle of the process. So I have an issue with that.
To follow up on that comment too, I also kind of concerned about that. I think we need to ask the county to produce the document that states what constitutes starting a process and what doesn't. So that we can see, there should be a clear black and, black and white line that says what constitutes starting the process? And then them changing the code halfway through. Because if they don't have a, a clear document, which they should, technically, if you start building a skyscraper and a huge development and they change the code halfway through, they could come back and say, hey, the code's changed. We gotta go back through all this stuff and redo it. I mean, they could do that if they don't have some type of step of document. So kind of going back to what John had, or sorry, trustee Gator had to say is, you know, I think that there's gotta be something where it's stated clearly in black and white that if you haven't, you know, there's a process, you know, what that process is to prove, you know, because we have contracts, we started our process on this along, long before they changed their code. And I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we'd already started our, our construction project once we started, you know, once we signed those contracts. And now they're saying, well, you know, you need to do all this extra stuff that you didn't have to do when you first started this process. So I don't, I also don't think it's fair. And I think that they need to be very clear on in, you know, what constitutes a project beginning so that, you know, I mean, this is kind of almost a precedent. I guess in my mind that if, you know, what if other people started the same process we have and are being forced to do the same thing? I don't think that's right at all.
Bob Gowing, Director of Public Works, we completely agree with that. But unfortunately, the way almost all land use regulation is set up, it's based on when you submit and we haven't submitted anything to them yet. So we were not pleased to hear that we couldn't get the exemption to the LNE, the location extents process that we had done before on utility projects. There was no outreach to utilities on this. So we're slowly kind of climbing the chain of command over there. And I think Nathan recently talked to kind of the head current planner at the county and Cody's helped us with that. So we don't have any intention of not pulling out every stop to
Well, I figured, I didn't.
To constrict this scope of work as, as small as possible. In fact, we've already started that process. One of the keys though is to get our planner on, onboard. That's really the, the most critical person in a design team. And this is a development as far as the county is concerned. That person's going to know every aspect of the code. They've got experience with the new code that was adopted in the spring by the county after we started this project. And we'll be pushing back on this quite hard. Frankly, the, where you get to the point where you have to kind of start making some decisions is how far do you want to push this?
Sure, no, I get it.
And that's an important relationship to us. And obviously, we're actually not in the GMA right now because we don't have an official GMA with the county. So they understand that we're issuing the building permits. This will be, the building permits themselves will be reviewed by the town. That'll be free because that's part of Cody's contract with SafeBilt. So this is really just the site entitlement and we fully, we can't really make any promises, but Nathan and the rest of us are going to do everything we can to streamline the scope of work as we go. We fully anticipate that we'll be able to trim some money off of this before we're done. And scope.
So to clarify, the previous code, the town did have to go through all this stuff to do water treatment.
That's correct.
Okay. So in the previous iteration of this code, did we have to inform the county that we were doing it?
What we went through on the first iteration of the water plant was we sent the building official a note. I sent him a note saying, our understanding is that we're exempt from the LNE process and other entitlement processes. And furthermore, we want to do our own building permit approved from it. So more view those building permits ourself. The, I won't say lower level, but the planners that would actually kind of handle this, well, we've, we're talking to their boss now. And if we need to, we'll go, we'll go higher up until we get the right answer. But we've got to get the planner onboard because they're a partner in this, right? We're not land use professionals. We, we don't know the land, the new land use code in and out. The planner will, and they'll be right there with us when we're working through or working our way through this as we go forward.
Okay, so just to clarify, so prior to this code change, we had reached out to the county and told them that we were wanting to do our own building permits.
That was for the original, the first version of the water plant project. So that was year and a half, two years ago when that happened.
So, but I mean, in my mind, that means that they were well aware that this project was ongoing. And to, for them to say anything different would be wrong because you have documentation that they understand it. Just because we changed our building plans shouldn't change the fact that we still weren't required to do the land use code stuff.
Right.
Do them. So I, you know, I guess, I mean, I get all the political crap that we have to deal with when we do stuff like this with the county or the state. But the bottom line is, is they were well aware, you have documentation that we were starting this process. And they, from it sounds like confirmed that they were, you know, that they didn't at that time do any of the land use stuff. And that we, they were going to allow us to provide, you know, do our own building permitting and inspecting. So as far as I'm concerned, we're exempt from the new because we started this well before and we have permission from the county officials at that time to go forward. I mean, it's pretty black and white now to me that they understand, they knew what was going on. And to now say that they, we have to follow the new rules when we, we started this prior to the new rules, it doesn't make any sense.
On water treatment side.
Okay, okay, well, then we can cut our, our, our extra expense in half. Then yeah, we'll do it with the wastewater, but we're not doing it with the, the new, the water treatment plant because you've known about this for a long time in my mind.
And I have one other quick question for clarification so that we know exactly who it is that we're politicking and asking for waivers from. Is the final site plan review, is that through the Laramo County Planning Commission or is that approved by the commissioners?
It's administratively approved by staff. And that was important for us because of the extra time required. If we have to go through the planning commission and if there's appeal to the board accounting commissioner. So this process is actually fairly favorable to us because it's, like I said, a staff approved.
I would be in agreement with what trustee Jerome had said. I, I want to be able to see where in writing it says, hey, as of your project was not in process as of X date, therefore, and what does that mean in process? You hadn't broken ground or you hadn't had 30% design or you hadn't had whatever that they're saying that now because you weren't at this point already. When we made these changes, you now have to abide by these because we had gone through a huge amount of this process on both plants prior to them changing the land use code. And now all of a sudden they're doing something else. So for me, without being able, them able to say definitively, you weren't here, this is where you had to be when we made these changes. Therefore, you now have to do X versus just saying, well, we changed this, you have to do X now. It's like, well, no, we had started this process long before you guys changed this. And before, we didn't have to do anything at all. So it's not like we had to do less. It's like, we didn't have to do any of this. So unless they can point to exactly where that is black and white, I can work in black and white, not with just, well, we changed it, therefore you have to. Because to me, that's not a legitimate reason to just all of a sudden say, congratulations, more money's got to come out of our pot. Plant.
I think that we can white variant. And haven't done. So.
Submit what?
I'm an application.
Were we required to submit a land entitlement, an application before?
No.
That's the whole thing.
I know.
So that's where I say, if, if they can't show us we're black and white and that's not, well, you didn't submit the entitlement, we never used to have to. So again, that's where I want to see it, not, well, well, now this is, no, before we didn't have to do a land entitlement. And you changed that, we were already, where does it say you were at X process, you hadn't done X for us to do something we never had to do before?
Okay, I think that we can get you guys that.
Well, there's, I, I'd like to make a, a quick comment that, you know, from the town's perspective, unless the building permit has been issued and the rules change. My understanding is, you know, when something's issued, you're following the rules that existed then. They don't change them ex post facto, but if you're, you know, when we updated to the new codes in 2018, multifamily units, attached units need to have sprinkler systems. Well, if you'd gotten all that stuff in prior to that change date, you would have been, I don't want to say grandfathered, you would have followed the till you, or your permit was issued. So happy about this. Stated that, you know, try to get the waivers and I mean, we don't want to get into this process. And I mean, I'm not sure how the board is going to vote today, but what is the impact to our project lines if this for some reason does not get approved?
Potentially, well, we, we don't really want to take that risk, right? That's why we're here asking to get the planner onboard so that we can kind of hit this hard. But if there's something where we're going to, going to get forced into a waiver variance process that does have to go to the planning commission and that adds like three months to the process minimum. That's assuming that everything goes well. So we, whatever process we embark on here, which we do believe is going to be a little bit, is already significantly downsized from their standard site plan approach. We want to make sure that we understand that right off the bat so that we don't get three months down the line and say, well, we had this piece of paper. And they say, well, too bad, it's, you're still going to have to do this. Then what do we do, right? So we would prefer not to get in that situation by hitting it hard right now with a planning professional and make sure that we have worked all that out ahead of time. And if I anticipated that question, I could have brought that section of the code with me. But certainly we can provide it to you in short order.
I was having the same exact thoughts about building, building code, code is code. So, you know, when you're working on the project, whatever code you're working on at that time, it's the code that you have to comply to. So I think it's super unfortunate timing wise and things. I, this is not a risk I'm worth taking to, to not proceed with a planner and make sure that we meet the requirements. I, I don't think that that's, I don't think this is a project in which we have room to take risks. So as much as.
I don't know that anybody said that we're going to say no. I was just asking you specific questions so I can understand everything.
And I'm just explaining my perspective too. So, yeah, I'm not trying to change anybody's mind right now. I'm just saying, within this project, it's not something I personally think we should take any kind of risks about. So if there is a method that we know that we could comfortably and correctly get through this process in the best way possible. I think we should do that. If there's opportunity for waivers, fantastic. But in my mind, with this project in general and its magnitude with our community, I don't think there is any opportunity to take risks for any possible delays. So that would be my perspective on, on how we would face this situation.
My concern is, what did Jacob's design to? Because if they're not meeting the Laramo County land use code, we have major changes to this project at 60% to 90%.
So the primary effort from Jacob's on this is going to be your, your drainage design? And that is to Laramo County code standards, drainage, current drainage design standard.
2018 or 2021 code standards?
I don't believe that those changed. We're talking, because we're talking planning standards versus engineering standards. And the engineering standards are what dictate your, your range design and those haven't changed. Those are still the same. And that's, that was in their scope to design to those. And, and that's the, all the documentation that I've seen is, is what their design is based off of.
So they've already done drainage design?
They've, they've done, that is the design, the required, the required submittal for the planning department is a drainage report. And that was not included in the original scope of work for Jacob's.
What is, I guess, I'm not in construction. So what is the difference? Because I mean, we're paying, you could talk about, we need the planning professional. The planning professional is $30,000 for both plants. We're paying an additional almost $70,000 to Jacob's for work. And that's a part to me is confusing is I would have thought we already had a lot of these documentation things put together, but apparently we don't.
It was not in their original scope of work.
To do a report.
To do the report.
So we're spending $35,000 for a report?
Not just for the report, there's additional documentation such as a photometric plan. The, there's additional additional requirements on the construction documents, construction plans that the county requires that I guess aren't, aren't currently on their plan set.
So the current plans, the county would not accept the plans that are, that's the part that I have a hard time with. We're going to present plans to a builder to build a $35 million plant. I would assume they're very thorough, yet the county says those aren't good enough. And we're building this process in Laramo County and we didn't, we didn't have that, like, oh, we should, that, the part that I'm not okay with.
The bench.
Alphacet with Jacob's. Our, our original scope had, we had made the assumption that we would get the exemption, which was how the plants proceeds. Some of the details of what they required in their new criteria are things that we wouldn't necessarily have done for the existing plants. Yes, we're doing all the drainage. Yes, we're doing all of the civil and service prep design. We weren't taking it through someone for additional review. And then they would have had comment. So if they have comments with, there's a cost to address the comments they have. And it is kind of a guidance, so it's not all clear code. It's a, you know, it's subject to their interpretation, their preferences. And there's a cost associated with doing that. And we don't typically have that on treatment plants within the county because this is new. And we've done many in the county and have had that exemption.
So part of Jacob's bill would be comments or response to comments?
It'd be doing, it would be doing the, a formal submittal that we didn't have. And to prepare them in accordance with their, their requirements and making sure all the I's and T's dotted and crossed is appropriate to, to achieve their approval. And then working with a planner that is expert at going through the county process. And there's items that we don't often have to address in great detail, landscaping, lighting and things of that nature. Lighting and things of that nature that are in the new code. Requirements that aren't things that we would typically do. At a, at a plant above what is for serviceable, serviceable functioning, functioning of the treatment plant. So this, the bar has been raised with this.
So we're going to have to do all these new landscape requirements on a plant that's miles from town and not visible to anybody?
With, without, without the exemptions, they could hold you to that, or they could. Take a, you know, a form after function approach, but there's. Requirements in there and you have to meet with them to determine what's applicable, what they're going to hold you to. And what's required for approval.
That's a, a good example of something we've already talked to him about and made the same point. The water plant's a little bit of a different story, obviously, but on the wastewater plant. There's really nobody to see that plant. It's already been there for some time. So um. We've already made some progress on that in particular. But what we want to do moving forward is potentially get out of the process altogether. Or to just streamline it and reduce that scope. So what, what we're bringing to you. Is kind of the worst case scope in our opinion of what this could look like. Primarily because we need to get rolling on it. Again, we fully expect that this cost is going to go down to this cost if, if not. You know, closer to zero. But it's not possible to say that with a hundred percent certainty. Until we actually get down there and start doing the more detailed. Kind of negotiation that happens with any land development project. We've got right on our side so that that can only help us move forward.
And these are all not to exceed hourly contracts basically, so.
That's correct.
All right, any further board comment?
The only thing that I would be comfortable with is potentially saying that we'll start with the planners since everyone's saying that's what we need with the express purpose to get this. Exemption done. Because if we get the exemption, we don't need Jacobs to do anything. Because off their plate, but and if we can't get the exemption. Then staff can come back to us and then we can redo a contract for Jacobs, but. I, I don't, I think that that, I'm not comfortable approving everything. Maybe the piece for the planners, but that's it.
I have a quick question about that, like worst case scenario. They say you have to put up pine trees along the road. And we say, no, we're not. And we build the plant, or what are they going to do? Take our birthday away? Take the plan away? They can't prevent us from providing a service to the community. So I think that that gives us a little bit of leverage, you know, when we're there at the table, we can. Do our best as staff to, you know, communicate that we want to play nice in the playground, but at the end of the day. They're not going to stop us from preventing it or providing an essential service to the community. And Nathan, I just want to applaud you for. Your effort and your presentation. It was not an easy conversation to come have with the board. Thank you for all of your hard work. And thank you trustee Whitehouse for your comment relative to. You know, the, that process when codes change and it really does come down to when you submit. Your project to the county, when you submit that application. And we do, you know, we follow that same process in our community when our codes are going to. That adoption phase. We try and take a moment to pause and take into consideration those situations where. It could be considered a gray area. But then there comes a time where you have to follow the rules and. We should be leading by example and following the rules, just like we would expect our citizens to do. So it's a difficult situation. I believe that staff will do the best that they can to try and give those exemptions and waivers. And we'll continue moving this project forward so that it happens in a timely manner.
Any comments? I'll open it up for public comment. No comments? Bring it back to the board.
So we need two separate motions? Is that what I remember?
One for the MTA contract and one for the Jacobs contract.
Okay, I'll attempt the MTA contract first and what is the to not exceed price? I'll make a motion that we accept the MTA contract with a con price to not exceed.
Fifteen thousand two hundred. And fifty dollars for each the water treatment and the wastewater treatment plant.
As noted by Mayor Protem.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
I'll go for it. Make a motion. We approve the Jacobs contract in the amount to not exceed. Thirty four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the. Water treatment plant and thirty two thousand four hundred and forty six dollars for the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you trustee Kenny is noted by trustee Kenny.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Okay. Move on to item number three. Oh, sorry. Thanks, guys. Three is amendment to professional services agreement with Safe Built Colorado LLC. Cody Byrd?
Take this off first tonight since it's given me problems in the past. I want to take a quick minute to here to. Introduce a staff member started in May. And we haven't had him here at the meetings yet, so. Want to introduce Kelly Dykstra. Kelly is our building official. We hired in May and he's been a great asset for the town already. He comes to us with twenty plus years of construction background and experience and ten years of. Code compliance, building inspection, plan review and building official service experience. Tremendous asset for the town. Kelly, do you want to take your mask off so that everyone can see your face real quick and say a couple of words?
Yep, Kelly Dykstra, good to meet you. I've worked with you a little bit in the past. I recognize a lot of faces. Want to thank you guys for opening up this position and I got an opportunity to work with Cody, which is dynamite. I'm excited to work with. One jurisdiction my past has been with, with one group, twelve towns, another group with nine towns, so. I'm anxious to work with one community and get to know faces and names and contractors and citizens and everything else. So thanks for, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Don't go too far. It, it's been a great addition to the team too, to have Kelly, his office is in town here. To be able to be more responsive to those calls and inquiries and be able to. Almost a moment's notice to go and meet with someone and help resolve issues that we haven't. Always been able to do. We've had a longstanding relationship with, with Safe Built Colorado LLC. They provided a great value to the town. They still do. But sometimes just because of their locations and physical. Connections and being able to be responsive when they've got other jurisdictions to serve as well. This has been a great addition to the team to, to help, you know, meet that customer service need that we've heard about for so long. And so hiring Kelly and with the board's approval of a position for a building permit technician in two thousand twenty two. Really encouraged staff to go back and take a look at our contract with Safe Built and work with our partners there. To identify, are there some ways that we can? Scale back the scope of services. On our, on our contract with Safe Built. To move to more of a kind of an as needed basis, an hourly rate for certain services. Obviously with the addition of a building official, our, our current contract with Safe Built. Contempts providing all of those building official services. And what we, what we asked for is can we just have that on a kind of a backup basis? If Kelly needs to take a vacation, we want them to be able to do that, having safe both available to provide that backfill. And for overflow, if we just can't keep up, we've got a, a good safety net and a reliable company like Safe Built to help us out. We do still anticipate Safe Built continuing to provide our plan review and our building inspection services. They do have office support staff that has helped out on the building permit technician roles and general communication coordination. We started taking a lot of that in-house a couple of years ago. With our existing staff and with the addition of the building permit technician. We can really take off and fly with that role. To continue to improve our customer service to our, our residents at a local level instead of. The Windsor office, which is where Safe Built operates out of. And ultimately really just working with Safe Built to kind of dial this scope of services in a little bit tighter to what our needs are. In your agenda packet, we included the, the contract with Safe Built that was last amended in two thousand nineteen. That's attached for reference. The way it was structured, the entire contract can really remain as it is. And then we just have the two attachments, the scope of services, which we proposed to amend and the fee schedule, which we've proposed to amend. I mentioned the building official services. One of the really great assets of working with Safe Built that we have is the software services and the software capability. All of our staff use that. It works really well and it meets our needs, so we don't really want to lose that service. That service stays with this proposed contract amendment. And really just kind of again dialing in, identifying which services the town is taking on and which ones that Safe Built. Will continue to provide or which ones can be provided on an as needed basis. The fee schedule is the other important piece of this contract. What we asked Safe Built for was a general reduction in the fees. That are paid for Safe Built services commensurate with the reduction in the scope of services. Our current contract is just a flat seventy eight percent of all of the fees that we collect for building permits. And plan review services gets paid to Safe Built to compensate for their time and consideration. And the town retains twenty two percent of that to cover the town's needs. As you can imagine, when we start adding new positions, we have additional costs to cover. Staff's intent of looking at this was to make sure that the, the fees that the town. Retains from our building permit activities cover the cost of those positions. And some of our general overhead for the department that those positions rely on, like office services. Software, printing supplies, things of that nature. So in the attachment there, you can see. It's the last page that I presented and kind of shows. The positions directly related to the built, the building permit and building official functions. What those costs are and what the total is, the bottom line is the net. Under the current fee structure, with the addition of those positions, we go a little bit backwards. We dip into the red. In that line item, so with the proposed fee changes, we've asked to go from seventy eight percent of the fees were paid to Safe Built to fifty five percent. For inspections and plan review. Seventy five percent. For electrical inspections. That requires under the state, the state electrical requirements requires a master electrician. Which is an additional cost for those credentials. So we felt comfortable with Safe Built having those additional costs and doing all of our electrical inspections. It was reasonable to have that fee stay closer to where it was today. And then the one stop permits, those are basically our over the counter. Meaning that it requires one inspection and you're done. Typically, sometimes there's a callback and those are okay, but. Generally speaking, it's, it's less work than other plan review services. And Safe Built does have costs of, you know, making a trip out their vehicle, insurance liability overhead, all those things. And so. They had asked for a higher percentage on that and we negotiated that dollar amount to sixty percent of the one stop fees. And again, other services we've asked for on an hourly rate basis or as needed basis and Safe Built's been willing to agree to those terms. In your staff report packet, the amendment. That outlines the things that I've just described has been signed by Safe Built already. They're comfortable with this and ready to proceed. Your town staff is comfortable with this procedure with these terms and ready to proceed. And I'll highlight in the very, very last couple of pages of your packet. Pulled just the line items from our two thousand twenty two approved budget to put together a summary of what those changes would look like in just the building department functions. And you can see that that line item becomes positive with those. Anticipated fee schedule changes. I'm happy to stand for any questions. I didn't let Kelly get too far away. He can answer questions as well if you have any for Kelly.
No, I think it'll be nice having those services available in our town and it is nice to have Safe Built as a backup plan. Safe Built's done a great job for us in the past, so. And they do offer some services that'll be a big step for us to take over if we decide to completely separate from them, so. Excuse me, any more questions?
Just appreciate the work you're doing to really cover the costs and kind of paying for those positions. I appreciate that. Kelly, I already heard from one contractor who's been working with you and he said, well, he, huh?
I said, I'm sorry.
And he said, well, I do bring a lot of issues to Kelly. He said, he's always great, positive attitude comes back with, so already hearing great things, so I'm very. Excited to hear that we're making good movements towards improving customer service, so I think this is good.
I just wanted to say too, to take a page from trustee McDonald's. Ethics here. I want to thank Safe Built because they, they do want to stay partners with us. And they work real hard to, to make it happen with us and they, they appreciated where, where we needed to be at, so I want to thank Safe Built too.
Well, just, I'll just concur with trustee Gator. I've had an opportunity to work with Mr. Dykstra firsthand and see his bedside manner. Working with some of our developers and community members with their building projects. And I have to say that being a building code official is probably once, just one hair better than being a code compliance officer. And I don't envy you and, and what you do, but thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you for being patient and for treating our community with candor and caring. When you're doing your, when you're doing your job. So I appreciate you, Mr. Dykstra. And it's exciting to have you and see you back on the team.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be back and we have created a great relationship with the fire department already. Everett is dynamite, trustee McDonald's dynamite, so. We appreciate the partnership there.
Okay. Anything else? Open up for public comment? Hearing none. Bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion? To approve the. Amendment to professional services agreement with Safe Built Colorado LLC.
I make a motion that we, where am I? Hey. Yeah, three amended to the professional service agreement with Safe Built Colorado as the mayor pro tem said, so.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
It's a team effort.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number four, resolution thirty three dash twenty twenty one, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado. Calling for a regular municipal election to be held as a mail ballot election on Tuesday, April fifth, twenty twenty two. And delegating authority to the town clerk to appoint election judges.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Crystal Iker, town clerk. So we will be holding our regular municipal election on April fifth of two thousand twenty for three trustee seats. Sorry, April fifth, twenty twenty two for three trustee seats and one mayor seat. And. State statute allows two different forms to hold that election, a mail ballot election and a polling place election. Historically, the town of Wellington has done polling place elections until two thousand twenty two when they conducted their first mail ballot election. With that came an increase in voter turnout from nine point one three percent in two thousand eighteen to twenty point one two percent. And then our most recent. Election that was coordinated with the county had a voter turnout of over forty four one, forty four point one percent. So this resolution is asking the border trustees to. Determine the form of election to be a mail ballot election in April of two thousand twenty two. And also delegating the authority and responsibility for appointing election judges to the town clerk.
Thank you. Any board comment?
Forty percent. I know, wow, that was my, that was going to be my comment, wow. That, like, that's all I have to say about that is, wow, that is fantastic. When you can get a voter turnout that is over. I think like ten or fifteen percent, I think is considered excellent. Forty four percent is unheard of, so. That, that is fantastic. So I completely and totally support a mail ballot election. I think that's fantastic.
It makes me so proud of the town of Wellington and our active voters, so thank you everybody who voted. And I look forward to giving you the opportunity to have the easiest voting possible with another mail election, mail ballot election. I think that makes absolute sense.
What is the difference in cost between doing a polling place election versus a mail ballot election?
The costs are. Previously, it's been around six thousand dollars to do. The polling place election and about ten thousand was the last. Mail ballot election, I believe in two thousand twenty. Choosing different vendors for the ballot packets and printing. The ballot packets and printing costs could increase those costs.
Okay, and then are we required by statute to delegate the election judges to the clerk? Or is that just something that we're doing for this year?
It's not a requirement. Um, so election judges, they can, um, you know. We can appoint election judges and then something comes up in their lives where they have to pull back. And so instead of coming to a board meeting to get those election judges appointed, it's something that we can do in-house as well as. If we need, um, to appoint a staff member in a hurry to help out with collecting ballots for some reason, we can do that in-house as well.
One, real quick, Crystal, can you maybe tell me a little bit about what goes into election judges? Cause I believe there's like some kind of, there's training involved. It's not just taking applications and picking people. It's actually, there's a, there's a process for it and then are there requirements that are tied to that as well?
There is requirements as far as being, um, a registered voter. Um, pretty much the same requirements they are to register to vote. They will go through, um, training for the signature verification, so they'll be able to access the computer through, um. We get kind of a smaller. Access to view signatures as the state has on file, so they'll be able to use that system to verify those signatures when they come in. Um, and then they will, they'll go through training with that. They'll go through training on how the election's conducted. And the whole process from start to finish.
So, so is that, are those part of the responsibilities of the person responsible for appointing or selecting? Election judges is providing that training?
It's usually the designated election official that provides that training. So it would be me in that case.
So would it be better to, um, appoint you as a designated election official? So it's more encompassing? Or leave it as stated to just be able to appoint election judges?
The election judges piece is sufficient. Um, title thirty-one. Out, not outlines, um, suggests that the designated election official is the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I just had like a question, this may help other folks. If somebody in the community wished to be an election judge, is there a timeframe? Or would that be, uh, posted? Or maybe you have folks who've already done this in the past who have already been through the training. But just curious if someone wished to, uh, go through this, is that, will that be outlined and, and published somewhere?
Eventually, at this point, we haven't determined that process yet.
Yeah, and then just the only other question I had is that I know with, especially with this last year. Um, we did do mail-in elections in both twenty-twenty-one and in twenty-twenty, but with both of those elections in twenty-twenty-one. We have the issue of marijuana on the ballot. I think that had more to do with the turnout than the fact that we did mail. And then in twenty-twenty, we actually had a fairly significant change in, um, actual. Um, electioneering by can candidates as well. So it's great that we've had great turnout and I hopefully that continues. But I don't think that solely was based on mail-in election.
We'll open up to public comment.
Christine Gator, downtown core. Um, let me just tell you my experience with, um. The curing process, I went door-to-door knocking on. There were forty people in Wellington that had signature issues and so their ballots did not count. So I went door-to-door knocking on their door to explain the process and help them cure their ballot. Well, from the first, um, count to after the curing, it went up fourteen. So fourteen people cured their ballot out of the forty. That means twenty-six, if I get my math right. Um, votes didn't count and they intended to vote. So that's the problem with the mail-in, um, ballot is people vote and it doesn't always count. They try to do the curing process. They either didn't do it, they were out of town, some of them were out of town. But they intended to vote and their votes didn't count. Um, a lot of the people that I knocked on the doors were disabled. That's why their signatures didn't match. Um, a lot of them were eighteen. They were new voters. So their signature didn't match from when they were sixteen and got their license. And so by doing the mail-in vote, we're disenfranchising disabled and new voters in this process and their votes might not count. That is my, um, perspective because I went and met these people. So I just want to let you guys know that. Um, there's also an issue, I've heard of several people that put it in the wrong drop box. So they also intended to vote. They meant to vote, their vote wasn't counted, they put it in the wrong spot. I just feel like there's a lot of places where votes are not counted. So yes, higher turnout maybe not correlated. Um, but higher turnout could have been because of, there's a big campaign going on. Um, I think that, that was the reason for the higher turnout. Um, I do have some questions. Um, oh, and just another thing, the polling place would ensure that everyone who intends to vote, their vote will be counted. Because you go in, you vote, your vote is counted. There is no signature verification that has to be done. That will invalidate your vote. So I do have a couple of questions. Will the votes be hand counted? And is there a way to check if it's a mail-in, like they do in the county, that, that stub? So you can call in or check online to see that your, your ballot was actually received. Cause that will cause even more problems when people think that they voted and there's no way to check to make sure that it was received. And then if we're doing Dominion or any of the, um, machines, I do have an issue with that. I'd prefer hand counting. Thank you.
Siker, answer those questions.
Those are still issues or those are still pieces of the election that we're, we are determining. We are still in the very, very beginning stages of doing the election.
May I make a recommendation that maybe we note, um, Ms. Gator's questions and then can follow up with her and the board, um, via email. That way there's, uh, official response.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ucker.
Who would make that determination as to whether, which vendor we use and whether or not votes will be hand counted or machine counted? Would those decisions be made by the clerk or by the board of trustees?
Generally, excuse me, generally those decisions are made by the designated election official, which would be the clerk.
Got it. So at this point, once the board approves a mail-in election, that's it. We don't have anything else to do from here, correct?
I mean, if we did a polling place election, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have any authority there, would we?
That's the, my answer is the same, no matter what kind of election it is.
Okay. Any further comments? Can I get a motion?
Is there more public comment? Are we done on public comment? I'm waiting, I was just waiting, so that's why.
Sorry, any further public comment? Okay, bring it back to the board. Any further discussion?
Um, I think it's very unfortunate, the idea that some people do not have access to voting. That is like something that hurts my heart. Almost like horribly. Um, so, uh, with the same idea of polling places. It's very difficult for single parents, for example, to get to a polling place on one day of polling, as an example, or disabled people to get to. If their mobility disabled to be able to maybe get to a polling place. So these are, these are issues in general with voting, I think are very serious. So I definitely take those very seriously. A lot of the problems, I think, associated with mail-in ballots can be resolved through education. Um, understanding that and reading directions as to how to sign your ballot. A lot of the, a lot of them just aren't signed. So, um, and what I think is really wonderful about our community is we have such a great communications group. So when it does come time to elections, the directions on how to do so, I'm so confident that that education will be available. So if we are doing mail-in ballot, ballots, you know, we'll give so much opportunity to so many people who participate. And then have great direction and education as to make sure their vote counts. So I, I'm just really confident in our town that we'll be able to do that. Efficiently and, and really well. So that, that was my comment.
I just had a quick question. Is there any rule in the town code that prohibits parents from bringing their children with them to vote? I know when I vote in Larimer County, my children come with me, but is there a Wellington law that forbids that?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado. Calling for a regular municipal election to be held as a mail ballot election on Tuesday, April fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And delegating authority to the town clerk to appoint election judges. Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Jerome.
No.
Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes. Move on to item number five, consideration for the twenty-twenty-two. Statement of work and budget agreement by the, by and between county of Larimer and town of Wellington. Sergeant Riordan?
I wanted to let you know there was a piece that didn't make it into the packet that I wanted to let you know about before Sergeant Riordan started speaking. Um, so when we initially received the contract from LCSO, that was the document and the information. And the amount that was provided in the budget that was approved by the board of trustees. After that adoption, we received information from LC, from Larimer. The percent. Contract. At describe. At the. Three dollars and four hundred and twenty-seven cents. And then the new amount is. I'm one million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. One million, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, four hundred and five, one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Was the initial one. And then, um, the new amount is one million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. So it's a difference of thirty-eight thousand, um, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. That, you know, I've started to pick through the budget. As you know, we are starting to pick through the budget, looking for ways to save money. As far as, you know, our water rates and things like that. So. If this contract would be approved tonight for the additional amount, um, the one million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Then the thirty-eight thousand is something that we as staff would start looking for to find those additional funds to meet that obligation. Um, when I mentioned this to the, um, mayor, uh, he did say, well, maybe we just push it off for another year. And do, you know, do the full nine percent next year as a, and just add, add the amount in that we're short this year. Um, and talking to Larimer County Sheriff's Office, that is not something that they, they support at this time. I mean, it wa, it was an honest error. I mean, it certainly, it, it, it went through, their finance department went through. Sergeant Riordan went through our own finance department. Nobody caught it. So it was an honest mistake and, um. Just will be looking for some direction on how you would like us to proceed after Sergeant Riordan provides his update.
Thanks, Betty. Um, in for clarification on that, the, this, the six percent portion of it. Uh, was included properly in all of the columns, except unfortunately in the total column. It was left at three percent instead of six percent in the total column. And again. Multiple people looked at it and none of us caught that until I was preparing the, uh, final draft for it. So. Um, so that's what you get. That's, that's what you got, uh, before you, um. The, uh, Larimer County Sheriff's Office has been contracting, or the town of Wellington has been contracting with the Larimer County Sheriff's Office. Since the early nineteen eighties, uh, for, uh, law enforcement services. It's our honor and our privilege, uh, to provide those to you. And hopefully, uh, are continuing to meet, uh, your expectations, uh, as, uh, as your local. Law enforcement, as your, uh, essentially your police department with the deputies that are assigned, uh, to Wellington. So the current, uh. Overwriting contract is in existence, uh, was signed in, uh, last year. Uh, and goes through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. And then each year we provide this, uh, statement of work and budget agreement. Where, whether it's adding personnel, uh, subtracting personnel, you know, costs going up, costs going down. Um, that goes in annually, so there's not a fixed, fixed amount over five years since. Uh, none of us has a very good crystal ball to know what's going to happen a couple of years down the road. And certainly not when it comes to revenues and expenses. So, uh, the, uh, the total increase, uh, from, uh, twenty. From the twenty-twenty-one contract to the, uh, twenty-twenty-two, uh, agreement. Uh, is, uh, two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, most were a very large portion of that. Uh, hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-five was increases in, uh, wages and benefits. Uh, the commissioners approved increases, uh, earlier this fall, uh, for the deputies. Uh, that were significant. Some of the, some of the deputies, uh, received as much as a twenty percent increase. Uh, to bring them closer to the salaries, wages and benefits of other, uh, northern Colorado law enforcement. Um, so that's, that's where you're seeing that, the biggest increase, uh, in those costs. Um, if we don't remain competitive, then we become a training ground, uh, for the other law enforcement agencies. Uh, that can afford to pay more. So we're trying, trying everything we can to keep that from happening. We've got good people and hope to maintain those good people. And take any questions the board has for me about this.
I have a question about school resource officers.
Yes.
Um, when our new school rolls up, I know we already have a Wellington middle school resource officer. Uh, we are moving to an entirely much larger campus. Will there be additional resource officers at that school within this next year and/or in the future? And if so, will that affect this current scope?
Um, if it changes, it, it will affect the scope. As of right now, from what I know. Um, the school district doesn't plan on, uh, asking to, you know, for more than one deputy. Um, it's going to be a combined middle school, high school. So there will be more students than, than what we normally have. But right now, uh, for instance, Pooter High School, uh, Rocky Mountain High School with approximately eighteen hundred students. Uh, four columns, uh, police has one SRO assigned to, uh, those schools.
That's good to know. Okay.
So, um, they may, especially as the school fills up and, and you're looking at sixth through twelfth grade students. You got a wide variety of issues, uh, differences between immaturity between, uh, middle schoolers and high schoolers. And, um, in that, but I don't know if they'll, when or if they'll increase that to two. Uh, or if they wait until they separate into a separate middle school, high school.
Okay. And so just for the purpose of the board, I'm curious where the costs associated with that. Where, where that burden lands, if it is, you know, a Pooter School District school. And if we, we need to have the cost for the additional resource officer, if that's needed or determined by the school district. So something to consider for future years, but it doesn't sound like it would affect this year that we're considering right now.
Right. And going forward, future years, um, that's the, the current agreement with the school district and, and the shared, the sharing agreement in the costs. Uh, is something that was worked out in a, uh, joint meeting with Timnuth, with, uh, Wellington. And with the county and with the school district. So I, you know, is the schools, as these new high schools come online in Timnuth and in Wellington. That's certainly something that can be brought back to the school district and.
Yeah. I imagine we won't be the first, only ones asking this question. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant.
Any other board questions? I'll open it for public comment. No? Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion or comments?
I just want to say that, um, for the Christmas parade we had last week, it was nice to see all the deputies out interacting with the town crowd. I think this gentleman right here enjoyed a little football game with some young kids that I think really enjoyed that. So it's nice to see that our deputies are interacting so well with our community, especially, you know, the kids. Cause that's, that's where the, uh, the relationship and the thought processes of law, how they look at law enforcement begins as, as young children. So any positive reinforcement from the beginning is a, is a good thing. So I'm going to applaud you guys. And myself was one of the ones playing football with you. So thank you.
So have any further questions on the contract? I did want to, um, just say a thank you to Sergeant Reardon. You've served Wellington very well over the last several years. I am sad that we are going to be losing you here in about two weeks, I believe, to the day. You get to move on to bigger and better things. But, uh, I'm very excited about having Sergeant Cherry take over. It's been great to see you out of the community. The only question I had is I'm excited about seeing more bikes. Is three hundred enough to maintain? Okay. Okay. Let us know if we need more. Cause I think seeing, again, it, it goes to what Drissy Jerome said, when we've got officers riding around on bikes. It's so much easier to hop off and talk to people and have those conversations. And I think that's great. So looking forward to it.
Okay. There are no further comment? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-two statement of work and budget agreement by and between the county of Laramo and town of Wellington.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes. Move on to item six, resolution number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees, appointing a town treasurer.
As we know, um, we are without a town treasurer right now. Our code requires us, requires the town of Wellington to have a treasurer. Um, and I was hoping that we could just go for the couple of weeks, three weeks before the January eleventh meeting without having a town treasurer. Well, as we started talking about it amongst staff, it, what if, what if something needed to be signed right away? What if, I mean, just actually last week, we needed to have payroll, uh, released and we needed to have the town treasurer to do that. So I was able to help and guide that along and get that payroll released. So this is a request to just appoint me as the town treasurer until the January eleventh meeting. On January eleventh, we will be requesting you appoint, um, Victoria Runkel as the town treasurer. And she is, she is most recently working, worked for the, um, town, um, for Erie and served as their treasurer and finance director for about a year. Um, and really improved their processes and things like that. So I'm very excited to have her part of our team and, um, to help, help. I, I told her, bring us, bring us to the next level in our finance department and set up some great templates and processes for us to work with over the next several years. So saying that, this is just a request to appoint me as your town treasurer just until the January eleventh meeting, and then you'll have a new resolution on your agenda.
Okay. Any comments?
So I think that's fine. We do need to have something. The, and again, until January eleventh, I get we need to do that. The only concern that I have as part of that is the treasurer is also supposed to counter sign with the town administrator. You kind of are in both of those positions. How are we going to work through that?
So we have added additional signers onto our checking account for it as a temporary basis. So we've added Crystal Eiker, the town clerk. And that's normal in most municipalities. Kelly Hodling is also a signer and Troy Hammond is a signer. So I'm very careful about the audit issues. I don't want us, I, yeah, I, yeah, I was very careful about that. So thank you for asking.
So I, I don't have, I think we need to have a longer discussion about how we have those positions set up in the combined finance director and treasurer. I think that's a conversation that is important to have in January, um, but, uh, I, I'm fine with moving forward the temporary. Just to make me feel better, can we actually put in there a time bound to the eleventh of January that that is the term?
Sure. Well, we can just reprint it.
We can extend it.
Absolutely. I'm, and, and I, trust me, this is the last place I want to be in right now. So, um, yes, I'm very much about changing the resolution to stating January eleventh. And then if something happens that we need to move it, but I think we'll be fine.
Uh, we could probably add it into the motion.
Is there, is there any problem, Mr. Sapienza, adding the date of January eleventh into the motion?
No, just add it into the motion with a moment to the printed resolution.
Any other comments?
No, sir. Oh, public comment.
Public comment?
Well, yeah, just.
He, he took a breath like he was going to make a motion.
Oh.
I'll make the motion.
No, you can't yet. You can open it for public comment.
I didn't mean to set you up for that.
Open it for public comment? Nope. All right. I'll bring it back to the board.
I make a motion to appoint Patty Garcia as our interim town treasurer with her term expiring January eighteenth, twenty, oh, sorry, eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Roll call, please.
Would you do adopt the resolution?
There's a resolution.
The resolution number is. Thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one.
Sorry.
Second.
I don't do that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes. All right. We'll move on to item seven, contract amendment for the town administrator, Stephanie Anderson.
Hello, everybody. Stephanie Anderson, HR manager for the town of Wellington. Um, the item I have for you tonight is an amendment to the town administrator's contract. So we did an annual review. It was conducted and then presented to the Board of Trustees on November sixteenth of twenty twenty-one in an executive session. The review was favorable and the board was in agreement to adjust the salary and the meeting attendance requirements for Patty Garcia, the town administrator. Um, so just so everybody knows, the town of Wellington does follow a pay-for-performance model, which means that, um, merit, any type of compensation changes are tied directly to performance. And earlier the board had, um, previously approved a pool for the cost of living adjustments, which I'll refer to as COLA and merit based on five point five percent of the town salaries. Um, at the executive session, the board discussed to follow the same merit and COLA, COLA adjustment as town staff. And the cost of living adjustment or COLA is two percent for town members. And then the remaining pool of three point five percent is based on, um, merit or based on performance as talked about above. Um, so the recommendation is that Patty would be assigned the same COLA and merit adjustments as other town staff. And based on her performance, um, her COLA adjustment came in at two percent and the merit increased at four point four or five percent. This would lead to a new salary of one thousand, sorry, I'm going to have the same issues as you, Patty. A hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. The board also did discuss to update the requirement to attend all meetings. So as outlined in the municipal code, the town administrator will still be required to attend all Board of Trustees meetings and also all planning commission meetings, but, um, will only attend other meetings when reasonably possible, meaning at least once per year. Does the board have any questions?
Okay. Open it for public comment. Nothing? I'll bring it back to the board.
I moved to a man, I moved to approve the contract amendment for town administrator. Do you want me to read off the changes in salary and all that as well? Okay.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes. Item eight?
Thank you.
Cancellation of the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one work session and the December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one regular Board of Trustees meeting.
So this is just a formal action so that there's something on the record that those two meetings will be canceled. Your next meeting will be January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So just, it's nice to have that on the record and, and formally approved and adopted by the trustees.
Okay. Any board comment? Open it for public comment? Okay. Bring it back to the board.
Make a motion that we cancel the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one work session and the December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one regular Board of Trustees meeting.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome? Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes. Okay. I'll close our regular board meeting and open our liquor license authority board. Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Kenny?
Present.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Okay. First item was the annual renewal for Big T Ventures LLC DBA Cantina Liquors.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Um, Crystal Eiker, town clerk. So, um, Cantina Liquors has submitted their annual renewal, annual renewal for their liquor store liquor license. A review of the application found the establishment is again standing with the Secretary of State and the sheriff's office reported no issues directly related to the establishment's liquor license. There were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection. Um, due to recent changes in our finance department, we are obtaining, username and passwords to check our sales tax compliance with the state. So once we get that confirmed, we will send it on to the state for their approval as well.
Okay. Any board questions, comments?
I had a question about that one item because it's, uh, obviously, so this does not, this is more of an administrative check and the state is okay with the local approval at this point. And
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comment? Uh, open it for public comment? Nope. Back to the board. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. We, uh, approve the annual renewal for Big T Ventures LLC DBA Cantina Liquors, uh, license renewal.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes. All right. Item two, annual review, come and go LC, uh, DBA come and go number nine thirty-four renewal.
Thank you. This is actually pretty much, um, everything's the same, but a different company with this one. They are renewing a fermented malt beverage liquor license. They are in good standing with Colorado Secretary of State's office. The sheriff's office found, reported no issues related to the establishment's liquor license, and there were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection. And we will check sales compliance as soon as we are able to.
Okay. Any board comment? Oh, public comment? Bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual liquor license renewal for come and go LC DBA come and go number nine thirty-four.
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Gator?
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes. Okay. I'll close the liquor license authority and we'll resume our regular board meeting. Reports, town attorney.
I wanted to clarify during the executive session where there's a discussion of the town administrator's role, there's also discussion of the performance of the town attorney. Um, and at that meeting was discussed a renewal of the town attorney's contract. And I just want to clarify why that wasn't on the agenda tonight. Um, town attorney's contract is, has an indefinite period. It can be ended at any time. And there were no changes that needed to be made to it. Town attorney and all the other officials have to be reappointed, um, after the first, at the first regular meeting after the election. So at that time, we'll, you'll have a vote, but we decided to shorten the agenda and not have you consider anything today. Otherwise I have no more updates.
Administrator?
Um, so we are expecting some high winds tomorrow. I wanted to let you know that what town staff is already working to. We've got generators set up and ready to go. If we end up with some power outages or anything like that, I will be on site all day. Um, just in case there's anything that I need to take care of. Um, tomorrow night, we are having our candidate forum for our, um, people who are interested in, in participating in the election in April. That's at six PM tonight, um, tomorrow night here at the Leaper Center. And I wanted to let you know, um, actually wanted to wish you all happy holidays since we won't be meeting again. I will be here. I'm not taking any vacation time this year, um, over the holidays. So we'll be here, um, all days that staff is required to be here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? Nope. Okay. I'll bring you back to the board. Trustee Gator?
Just had a quick question with the candidate forum that tomorrow, are we as trustees allowed to come to that? Has it been properly noticed as a meeting? So if we do show up, I just want to make sure if I, I'm not supposed to show up, I don't.
Yes, trustees, I'm definitely come. It is posted as a, the three or more requirement.
That was it. Thank you very much.
I wondered if, uh, our town clerk could, so there's some resources that were put on the town website that has a pretty good overview that you, if you could sort of refresh people so they could know where to look for it and what's in there. It's a, it's a good document. I would recommend reading it.
Yes, there is a municipal election guide that's been posted on the town clerk's web page, um, under elections. It gives information on when the election is going to be held, how the nomination petition process is going to go. There's also sample forms in there. Um, there is a candidate's guide from Colorado Municipal League and just a wealth of information all in one spot.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
I have nothing.
Brief. I just wanted to thank town staff for all of the hard work that they put into the recent holiday celebration. It's really easy for the board to, um, celebrate the challenges and the hurdles and the red tape and the difficulties throughout the year. But one of the goals that we had as a board and that we talked about during our strategic plan development was also celebrating our successes. And it was really amazing to watch the different facets of the town staff, the planning department mingle with the recreation department and to have that informal opportunity to chat with you all and just get to know you as people. And for you guys to get to know us as people too, and not just the elected officials sitting up here behind the DS. So thank you so much for all of your hard work in twenty twenty-one. It has not been easy. And we appreciate you and thank you for the opportunity to celebrate with you this last year.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thanks. All right. No further comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.